August 10, 2023, Planning Board Meeting. And I will start with item number one, which is roll call, and I'll start to my left.
Riley Bergeron.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Evan Seer.
Tim DeRoche.
Tony Farrar.
Okay, so seeing as though we do not have some full members present, I am elevating Tim DeRoche to a full member with voting privileges. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our minutes. There are no meeting minutes, so we can move from there. The third item on the agenda is a public hearing for 05 Center Street, the Jim Wu proposal. Just as a reminder for everyone here, we did actually review this in totality not too long ago. And if you review your staff packets, you know, there is the rationale and reasoning why it's in front of us again, you know, a few changes. So I will pause and hand it over to staff.
Thank you so much. I'm just gonna pull up a rendering here. So, like you said, we heard this project, I think, in April for the first time. Much of the project has remained the same. Pull up the full plan here. The number of units is the same. We still have 21 units. The entrance location is the same. There are still two buildings, although now the buildings are both on the same side of the street to the south of the lot. And the reason is because it worked better for the design and the grading. The number of utility connection locations are the same. The removal of the retaining wall that's located along the Center Street frontage is the same. And the city still has the ability to divert or expand the sidewalk behind an adjacent power pole. So, the old design was abandoned in favor of this design because the building and the construction costs were prohibitive to the original design. The applicant believes that the new layout will be more affordable and provide for more screening from Center Street, which is another reason for the change of the building layout. The parking area has also been reduced. This plan does include 31 parking spaces with two accessible spaces. A sidewalk will be constructed to allow for connectivity from building one to two to the parking lot in Center Street. The lighting plan has been submitted, and the light features are fully cut off. So they are, I can pull up that lighting plan, so we can see that virtually no light goes past the parcel. The apartments will receive public water, sewer, gas, underground power, and a new six-inch water line will connect to the existing 12-inch water main. A new manhole will be added, and two new ground-mounted transformers will be installed. This project, this iteration, has less impervious area than the previous approval by 4,000 square feet. So that allows for better stormwater treatment and for it to be stored in the Center Street stormwater system from a 25-year storm. And there have been no additional comments from peer review. We don't see any problem with this design. We think it works quite well for this area. And now we are available to answer questions. The applicant has also today submitted the conceptual landscape plan, which is in front of you. We just received this before the meeting, but you can see what's planned for the landscaping. The applicant's agent is here to answer any questions. We also have a rendering of the buildings, which I can pull up here, so we can see an idea of what the construction will look like.
Excellent. Okay, any questions for staff before we open it up to the applicant? Seeing none, we'll talk to the applicant.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for making the time this evening. I know you've had a busy week. Catherine did a great job summarizing. Yes, you probably all remember the previous plan from this April. In particular, the long building in the front, we found that it was quite close to the road. So there were concerns about marketability, as well as they were very custom buildings and long, which made the construction costs quite a bit more than expected. So these buildings here are better positioned and more easily built. And now we have some renderings, too. I think they look great. They have more of a modern look to them. And we're hoping that will help to show what the applicant wants for his vision of the lot and use of the property and tenants, as well as to separate it from other buildings in the city. This new layout, this is fine right here, Catherine. With this new layout, again, we're a bit further away from the road. And that retaining wall in the front, in the last meeting, we were removing quite a bit of it, but not the whole thing. This, we're able to grade right straight to the sidewalk. It also leaves a great spot for landscaping and to buffer from the road. And you can see that in the landscaping plan. So the site will be buffered from the road quite a bit more than the last layout. Other than that, it's largely the same.
Excellent. Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a quick one. So I heard Catherine mentioned the drainage for 25-year storms, and I don't think I need to remind anybody what this summer's been like. My concern is what the impervious parking lot and other areas may contribute to the known flooding issues we have in Center Street on that area. Do you have any preparations in place to prevent or curtail it adding to the problem? And I'd just like to hear what you have to say about that.
Yeah, I'm not an engineer, so I can't speak to that in detail. But I know that our stormwater report does account for, I believe, up to a 200-year event storm. And the impervious surface of the site now is not a substantial increase, if at all, I think, from what existed or what exists currently. And certainly, those stormwater implementations aren't there now. There is a retention pond to go in the front to assist with that as well.
Yeah, Tim, we did look at that with the city engineers. So there is 4,000 square feet less impervious than there was before. So there is an improvement. And then we were waiting on this landscaping plan. And, you know, the landscaping plan really is gonna take up a lot of the water from the existing impervious area that they're proposing. Overall, this is a real improvement from the last plan that they did in terms of just strictly looking at stormwater alone, not alone the aesthetic value and everything like that. And then the connectivity to the, you know, to the road, where they had some stairs coming down. And we, there was a time where we kind of, we thought we'd model that and that there may be rain coming down those stairs coming down there. But they've eliminated that stairway in this, in this design, and there's total improvement from our perspective.
I understand. My direction just came from our initial approval of the project back before everyone needed to have a vote. Now, when I look at this plan, I just foresee a funnel effect, and that's my concern. Now, with everybody's awareness of what's been going on. And, I mean, otherwise, I love the looks and everything of the project, but the water runoff is my concern right now.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay. All right, so I will open it up to public comment. So I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, perfect. So from the public, if you want to come up, state your name, five minutes, and your address, and your thoughts. Okay, not seeing anyone from the public. I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent. So at this point in time, we can have a conversation deliberate amongst ourselves, address any questions that you may have with staff as well. Or I'd seek a motion.
I guess, I'm gonna say it now just because it pertains to this specific project. One, I actually like this plan better. I like the elevations of the building much better than the elevations on the previous building. I think the buildings look nicer. I do have a concern about the grading at the rear of the building, but when comparing it to the current grade, you're essentially seeing the same elevation change in the same spot as just being done over a steeper grade. So I would like it, like in the future, for things like that to be addressed, the fact that there is a change in the grade, but why is this change okay? I know from experience, looking at it, that they're not changing elevations per se. They're just sort of pushing that out. Well, my real comment is about this and the fact that until we had this in front of us, we had an incomplete application. And I understand that things come in last minute, but I don't know how everyone else feels on the board. My preference would be that staff maybe coach applicants to either put in that they want a waiver to that because that's something that an applicant can do. They can ask for a waiver to a specific design requirement, right? The landscaping being one. Or simply not bring it to us. Asking for a waiver would have meant that this would have been a complete application packet already. This was only a complete application packet once we got this. And so that's not a discussion about this specific site. That's really a comment on process, and I'll make it now because it pertains to this specific site.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Or do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the development of a two-building, 21-unit apartment complex with parking on the 1.22-acre site at 405 Center Street, parcel ID 271-065 pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, General Business District, and Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Site Plan Review with the following conditions: No development until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor? Excellent, motion passes unanimously. Yep, you're welcome. All righty, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, special exception, the Reflections Auto Sale. So I will hand it over to staff.
We ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay. So Davis Land Surveying, on behalf of Jennifer Winship, is applying for a site plan special exception within the general business zone at 512 Washington Street North. The property currently has an existing structure with a residence on the second level and a garage underneath. Currently, the lot coverage impervious area consists about a little over 9,000 square feet, or 43% of the coverage. They're basically looking to add another 431 square feet. That's to get some of this parking in. If you look on the south end of the plan here, you can see where that parking's going in. That's, that hatched area is the 470 square feet as Note 10. There's a profile of that construction. The city engineers looked at that. The biggest concern here was the road openings currently were 36 feet, and we're proposing those road openings now to be one-way and 22 feet, which meets the access management guidelines for the city. That was the biggest takeaway here. Essentially, what they're doing is they're asking for, you know, retail sales, small retail sales for used car lots. So staff thinks that there's sufficient parking here for the residents, the part-time car lot, and also there's a small cleaning company where they do detailing on vehicles. So there's a few things going on there in just making sure that they had site distance and access and the right amount of parking. And handicap parking is really the improvements that we're looking at here. There is a sign that is currently, right now, that doesn't meet the ordinance requirements, and that's also shown on the plan set. So we're not using that as a special exception or a condition of the application because it is on the plan. They're looking, we're looking to have that sign off the right of way to meet the MDOT requirements. So just a few things there. You know, this is an opportunity when somebody comes in for an existing site. You know, it's been our effort to clean up the site in terms of traffic safety and movement. So I think we've done a pretty good job for a small company like this to address a lot of the concerns out there for access management. Staff doesn't have any additional questions or doesn't have additional input or anything like that. We're just limiting the number, based on the number of parking spots, to no more than four vehicles being sold at one time.
Okay, any questions for staff before we ask the applicant to come forward?
Yeah, so staff indicated, so the site plan indicates that there's a stockade fence to the north, I'm thinking, along that where there's appears to be a residential structure. The lot to the south along the road appears to be wooded. Staff makes note that the tree coverage there is sufficient for buffering. My question is this: When I look at the site plan, I don't see those trees. One of the requirements of the site plan is that those existing things be there so that way we can address these concerns and understand what the actual conditions of the site are. So I'm having a similar issue with the last one. I felt like the plan that was provided was quite sufficient and great, and once we got everything. I feel like I don't have the information here to say what's what because if those trees are not indicated on the site plan, they are not part of the site plan approval, which means there's no requirement that they remain. If they were intended to be the buffering, they should be indicated on the site plan.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you that, you know, I guess, based on the, you know, the amount of workload that we've had, that was something that we just missed, point blank. We did a lot of changes to the site plan to address the traffic, and that was our focus. The fencing was there, the trees were there, and a site visit. It didn't come as something that was elevated to a point that, you know, should be on a plan. I don't disagree with you. It should be on the plan. It was just something that we were so hyper-focused on traffic moving in and out of the site, being a fast site, that that was what we thought that was the most important thing to address for this approval. But, you know, that we could make it a condition that, you know, we verify that there's adequate buffering there. You could make a condition, something like that.
My concern is not that there's adequate buffer. I think in looking at the aerial views provided, it's clear that there's a tree buffer there. The reason those things are indicated on a site plan is because if it is present on a site plan, it is to remain ever-present. And that's the point of, that's why it's required, right? So. And I guess I can ask the applicant, but did they indicate whether or not the residential unit will remain a residential unit?
The unit on this project? Yes. Jennifer's still gonna remain delivered.
So my question for staff is this: The site plan indicates residential amenities, i.e. a pool. When we approve a site plan, the site plan has to stay as it is. What are the implications for the applicant if the pool is indicated on the site plan, but at some point they no longer want it? Can someone with standing next door, who is simply upset at something they've done, force them to put a pool back because it was approved as part of the site plan?
I don't think that the pool is contingent upon the approval of the actual, you know, the auto sales lot itself. I don't see any connection there for, you know, requirements under the site plan review process that would require a pool to go back or not be there.
We're approving a mixed-use site plan. If we approved a mixed-use site plan that had a porch, they would be required to have that porch, and it would have to be there in perpetuity. I guess, maybe I'm being nitpicky. I don't want to give, on a butter who has standing, a really silly, foolish reason to give the current owner or a future owner hard time simply because they chose to remove what would be a residential amenity, something that I would not have expected to be included on the site plan to begin with.
Usually, for site plans, I think, the idea is because it's existing. So to not show it would be to not show an existing thing on a site plan. I don't know. I'm, I would make the judgment that I would think that it would be appropriate to show. But I also see what you're saying, that to show it and then to remove it, how do we deal with that? I'm happy to, maybe we can talk about ways to address that if that happens.
Again, I don't think it's a part of the approval process. It doesn't associate what we're approving under the special condition of this site plan, though it's shown on the site plan. It's just an existing condition of the site.
We're approving a multi-use building. I understand that it's being triggered because of this specific use, but whatever. You know what? I'll be fine with it. I'm just trying to say that we gotta think about those things because there's no reason to give someone in the future a foolish reason to give someone a hard time if they're doing the right thing.
Noted.
I'm also wondering why our site plans are labeled preliminary. Is that just, was that just an oversight? The site plans that are provided?
We normally submit all our plans that have preliminary on until it's approved. Then it will supply you with a, taking that word off. And again, on this plan, we could have showed that buffer, and we still can for the plan. You approve this project when you sign this plan and have that wooded buffer alongside.
Yep, that explanation makes sense, thanks.
Okay, so now, any other questions for staff before we open up to the applicant? Okay, go ahead.
You waiting for me?
Yeah. Do you have any additional comments, any other?
No, I mean, I think John went through the whole project quite well. Again, the only thing I could add is we can add the buffer, the tree line along that side of the property. There's gonna have to be a couple trees taken down to accommodate this parking. There's still plenty of buffer there. We can add it to the plan. Submit it to the town if you approve this, when you sign it, you'll see it on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant?
It stated that there's eight new parking spots, seven plus the handicapped, and two employee or home parking spots. So I, and does that include, where is the four spots for the cars?
You have three up there with the handicap. You got two beside the building, and then there's the other three here, which we had four there originally. And working with us through with Catherine and John, we had proposed four parking spaces for the sales of the cars. That went down to three. Now I see it's back up to four. So we had four right there where her cursor is. And again, if we're going back to four, we can put that space back in, which used to be right here.
And I just have another question. So if there's four cars for sale, and then there's also detailing and plus a apartment, it just seems like there's not a lot of parking for all of it. Where would, like, the cars being detailed park while they're waiting? Or it just seems like there's...
That was some of the discussion we had with the staff, is that there was really no required parking, but we were trying to work in some parking.
Yeah.
So we have three spaces up top with the handicap, which would be for customers, whatever. The two along the side of the garage would be for her employees or whatever. And Jennifer, I assume, parks in the garage. So these four on this lower side, the south side, is for the sales area. So the employee would park along in the garage, and the other ones up there would be for customers.
What about the residential parking?
I believe she parks in the garage.
In the garage, so the garage is not intended to be used for the business? Okay, I have a question for staff. How does that work? So you've got a space that's identified as the commercial space that's gonna pull double duty as a residential parking. I understand that the current owner does that, but... The reason these things are approved, you know, under scrutiny is because the assumption is the person that owns it now is not always gonna own it. So it's not just trying to make sure that what happens now is appropriate, but that it's set up to be utilized appropriately in the future, moving forward. So I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around that one.
So the parking spots that we considered were the parking spots that are outside the structure. You can utilize the parking spots in the garage as additional parking spots, but we didn't use that in our count.
No, I'm just asking about the idea that the garage is both gonna be used as commercial space and the parking for the residential unit because there is no parking indicated so far for the residential unit. We're hearing it'll be one of the bays in the garage. And I'm saying, does that actually constitute as parking? Can they do that? Can they pull a double duty, saying, "Today, I park in this bay, but I don't park there today because that's being used for the business. I'm parking over here"?
Yeah, I think there's some flexibility in that, in that those are existing parking garages, you know, parking spots, and they've been utilized that way. So we were really just concerned about the additional parking for the actual retail sales of the used auto dealership.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up to public comments. So at this time, I will seek a motion to open it up to public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, excellent. Anyone from the public would like to come forward and speak? Five minutes. Say your name, address. Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Perfect. All righty, so at this point in time, we can deliberate amongst ourselves, ask John and Catherine any questions that you may have, get your thoughts.
So I'm gonna go back to the parking. This parking, because you deemed this was the number of required spaces for the business?
So under our ordinance, there's no parking requirements. So now we're talking specifically parking for the retail sales portion, and that's what our attention was. Based on site constraints, we really needed to assign a number in the condition of the approval of the site plan.
And I will note that we did... And I will note that we did, um, we did have talks with the applicant, and we were discussing the limit of, um, I think we said three to four, um, cars for sale at a time, because we were factoring in the need to have the, the, um, the residential parking space, the detailing, the customers, so we kind of did some backwards. We, we counted back down to see how many we would need there, and we felt comfortable with giving the provision that, uh, with a limitation of how many cars could be there as, um, cus, or for car sales at a time.
Yeah, I guess where I'm going with this is I understand that commercial doesn't require it, but we did not remove that requirement for residential. So I would feel more comfortable somewhere on this site plan, it is written that, like, one of the available parking spaces is for the residential unit. If that means that the garage counts as a parking space and they're using that, that's fine, but moving forward, that, so that anyone purchasing this at a later date recognizes that they, they have to provide that parking for that residential unit.
Yeah, it was, it was assumed the two parking spaces along the garage were noted as residential parking spaces.
Okay, it just doesn't appear on the site plan that way, and I don't care if they have to be identified, there's nothing in the ordinance that says which spaces in the lot have to be identified as residential.
But we, we specifically identified them in the, in the staff, staff review report in text.
We approve a site plan. We don't approve a staff report, that's all I'm saying, it just needs to be noted somewhere that.
We could, as a condition of approval, add those, those, um, that we need to, uh, label which parking spaces are for which functions, um, and not, not give the go-ahead to do this until we get that, that approval. That's an idea, um, I could, I could send it to you all so you could, so you can just see it for your awareness once we get that in.
Yeah, I like what you just said, 'cause I'm just doing the math. If, if you assume two vehicles for residence one, two vehicles for residence two, four vehicles for sale, that's eight spots. I'm only counting ten up there, so not allocating for customers or maybe another visitor to either of those residences, given how busy that road is, how packed with traffic and the speeds, I don't want to set anybody up for anything negative, I guess.
Yeah, so just real quick, Tim, I think I only see one residence.
Yeah, that's, land use class is only one, so there's only one residence.
There's only one, not two, just heads up.
Sorry, I thought I saw that there was a rental in there.
Any other questions? I, I guess what I would say to the board is, um, I have two conditions that I wrote down, right, from your concerns, right, parking and buffering. If we proceed with a motion, I would ask whoever does, um, proceed with the motion, consider the two conditions that we talked about, the buffering and verifying and the parking versus doing amendments. I just feel like it would be cleaner if we have one motion versus an amendment and an amendment, so just kind of some guidance in my thoughts and suggestions, but to that end, um, you are all more than welcome to do whatever you would like if you choose a motion.
Residential, I can't remember, we've seen so many multifamilies lately, this one and a half, what's the, what is it for, like, a single family?
The math is 1.25, but that's for four more units.
Right, so what's required for a single residence?
One parking spot.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, or I would seek a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed car dealership at the existing building located at 512 Washington Street North. The site plan for the proposed development meets the requirements pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, Section 60 dash 499B3, and Division 2 and 3 of Article 16, Section 60 dash 1277, and further that the application meets the requirements of special exception, Section 60 dash 1336, of the City of Auburn ordinances with the following conditions: One, no more than four vehicles, uh, may be on a lot, uh, for sale at any one time; Two, then a note be added to the site plan presented for final approval by staff to indicate that at least one spot, uh, on the lot shall remain for residential use; And Three, that, uh, the project may not move forward until such time as the applicant has provided a, a, a buffer plan along the, uh, this looks like southwestern, um, lot line that meets the requirements of ordinance to be approved by staff.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have a discussion of the motion? I mean, I, I appreciate it, I do, I think it's good, okay, so I mean, I, I appreciate it, and anyone else have any thoughts? Nope?
I appreciate it too.
Yeah, awesome, thank you, good job, okay, um, so I will take a vote, all those in favor? Excellent, all those opposed? All right, motion carries. All righty. The next item on the agenda is a workshop text amendment, um, so, oh.
No, no, no.
Okay, um, so it is a text amendment, uh, to the definitions to eliminate the minimum dwelling size, um, for buildings, so I will pause real quick and hand it over to staff for the workshop.
Can I? I'm looking. Sir, are you the gentleman that was here on Tuesday?
Yes, he wa, he is, he is.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't entertain, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, suspend rules and move, um, Item 7 to be taken up prior to Item 5.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, do you have any discussion about it? Okay, all those in favor? All right, excellent, um, so at this point in time, I will seek a motion, oh, I don't have to with public comment, I always do that, um, you can come forward with public comment. State your name, your address, yep, and you have five minutes, sir.
Mike Willett.
Thank you.
242 West Auburn Road. After sitting through three hours of the meeting Tuesday, it seems to me that the city and the planning department is misleading you and the residents of Auburn on what they're doing with the new zoning. I have followed the current proposal on the docket with much interest, but seems the whole process has been mollified, uh, muddied by all the choices and verbiage, which, which makes keeping track of the various proposals hard to keep up with. It is confusing to say the least, purple areas and now blue, which represents up to 16-unit buildings are allowed in these areas. If you attempt to ask a question during discussion for clarity, you're told to speak during the comment section, which is ended, in which no questions can be asked, just comments, questions give insight. I know all of you have attended planning workshops on zoning, but new rules and zoning changes were presented. Some of you even looked perplexed as why the cart's in front of the horse will get in line. From the watershed, AGP zone, um, in the Taylor Pond watershed, it seems that, uh, there are multiple areas that are being reviewed at the same time, which is quite unprecedented in the history of the city. Blanket rezoning is what it is called, and what the city and city council are doing. Verbiage states you are not required to develop your property, but if the land next to you is purchased, they can build with no limits. So now your driveway can be considered an access road, and you can still use your garage. I didn't know that was a thing until it was said out loud. The last time I spoke to the planning board, I recommend that each proposed development be done case by case, sensible development that puts the resident's community needs and culture to the forefront of increased development. It is concerning when the planning department can't split screen section of the city being discussed, highlight each section on the map during discussion, and the hand, handout wasn't much help either. That the proposed zoning can die in committee for a specific, specific non-vital area, but when a petition was signed by over 2,400 residents to stop the development of the gravel pit that threatened the city water supply, and it didn't justify dying in committee, you must have had waited 30 minutes and poof, it passed. I didn't think that was a thing either. There are a lot of talk of litigation, lots, that should be a big red flag for you. The city would make you believe it happens all the time, but I think not. So during the meeting, they amended 1 through 8 because they need the verbiage to try and cut the process at the knees or at least slow it down, because why no more, because they know more is coming. Remember, you need to vote on all voting, zoning changes before the end of the year. Litigation, bad. So we can come to, so we come to the cart before the horse. Over an hour discussion on a ramp, South Main-Vicary bypassed the Washington Avenue. The board member is right, it's been over 30 years since the Turnpike ramp was proposed. I would know because I looked into buying the golf course. In fact, South Main-Vicary loop has been like that even longer. Talk of a ramp on Washington Avenue as well, on, on Tuesday, I heard it would be decades in the future, if ever. This has been discussed in the past and will be for many, many years to come. Let's waste an hour on that. Why can't we fix at least South Main-Vicary Road? Ledge. It's everywhere. You would need to blast rock, and a, a pumping station was $4 million back then, I think it would be big money now. Blasting is like litigation, big money. You get my point? The planning department knows this and wanted to waste an hour of everybody's time rehashing it. Why didn't he tell you about the ledge? I'm not sure, but if he doesn't know about the ledge, he shouldn't be sitting in the chair. So when you hear planning department say it won't cost taxpayers money, hold on to your wallet. And finally, not in my backyard, once you change the zoning, there's no going back. Your decisions will be felt for generations. The whole planning department works for the city and the mayor's agenda. This whole zoning process is being done with a hatchet and not a scalpel, so let me be perfectly clear, the people who use NIMBY, like the mayor and the owner of Sable Ridge, will make sure development doesn't happen in their backyard, only yours. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
And I apologize for, for my reaction the other night, thank you.
All righty, any other members of the public would like to come forward?
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I, I had no intention of speaking tonight, but I think I, uh, am brought to do so as a result of some of the comments that the prior speaker has made. The planning department has been under tremendous amount of pressure to undertake a lot of consideration of many projects in the last year and a half to two years. Sometimes I have disagreed with the planning staff on some of their proposals, sometimes, as was the case Tuesday night, I was substantially in agreement with the, what the planning staff was proposing, and those amendments, 1 through 8. Those came about, as I said, Tuesday night, as the result of extended discussion between a large, uh, group of Agriculture and Resource Protection Group citizens, several dozen in number, uh, and the planning staff over a course of some really intense discussions in a month's time. Not everything came out exactly perfectly, but, uh, it came out very well overall. As to the, uh, gravel pit area, I believe the previous speaker, uh, is a bit mistaken, there was in fact a petition to repeal the zoning change that came about, uh, in March of last year. The city council took its final action on March 21 to change that zone in the area of the gravel pit and Lake Auburn. A citizen petition was then developed, it did obtain over 2,000 signatures, uh, more than the necessary number were declared to be valid. As a result of bringing that successful petition back to the city, the city council had two, uh, alternatives it could have undertaken. It could have put the matter out to a public referendum, uh, which would have had to have been at a special time, given the constraints of the charter, uh, and it would have cost the city additional money, or, uh, the council could have repealed the ordinance that it had enacted, uh, in March, and that's exactly what the council did. On September 6 of last year, that zoning change was repealed, and that entire area at present remains both in the Agriculture and Resource Protection Zone, uh, and, uh, in the Lake Auburn watershed area, the overlay district. I shouldn't say that it remains in those districts, it was restored to those districts. Again, I don't always agree with staff on their various proposals, some of which may have initiated with the city council, uh, some of which are initiated by the petition, and the staff can't not respond to those, those are citizen petitions, so they have to address those and bring something forward to this board. Uh, I think they're doing a good job under difficult circumstances and would like the record to reflect those facts, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, any other members of the public to come forward? All right, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment?
Not needed, you opened it.
Oh, gosh. All right, sorry, all right, so heading into item number five, uh, the workshop text amendment, thank you for actually bringing that forward, I do appreciate that. So, again, considering amending, um, a text amendment to, um, Section 60 dash 2 and the minimum dwelling size, so I will hand it over to staff.
This is a, a proposal that was brought forth by our community development office, actually, um, and really goes, um, it looks at just eliminating the definition in terms of the 700-square-foot, uh, provision that requires housing to be at least 700 square feet, unless it falls under the tiny home provision. So there's a gap essentially from 400 square feet to 700 square feet, where as staff, we can't permit, uh, new homes to be constructed at that size, so we're really looking to, this is really about getting down to a price point, and if, Catherine, if you could go to the, um, should be the economic analysis housing? So I, I just want to share this with you guys a little bit, I think this is important information here that, that, uh, we've been working on, and, and this might look familiar to you guys, I know it's not in the packet, but I, but we're in a workshop and I wanted to share it with you, 'cause it, I just had a chance to finish it. The long story short here is that if, if you could scroll down just a little bit, Catherine, in 20, yeah, right there's fine, in 2022, um, the average income for a new home was $104,000, that's what they needed to, to meet, um, that's what somebody needed to make in order to qualify for a home at 28%, right? So 28% of that, they needed to make a salary of $104,600 for a 1,200-square-foot home, uh, one-bath kind of, kind of place. Today, a year later, that same home is $133,000, there's no inventory for land, um, there's not a lot of builders, cost of homes are going up. So now we're really trying to figure out a way, you know, how, how do we get people in homes, um, gaining equity? You know, I think that's, you know, if we look at, um, our number one investment in life, it's, it's probably our home, and that's probably where, where most Americans gain their number one wealth is, is getting equity in their home. And eliminating that, um, idea of the 700-square-foot down to 400 to 700, now if you scroll down a little bit further, Catherine, that 700-square-foot home now, a little bit more, you'll see that the income required today is $78,000, so that, you know, for a couple, a young couple living, a doc, um, not a doctor, but a, you know, a, a teacher and a fireman probably could afford that small home, that two-bedroom, one-bath home. Uh, I gave you some examples in the staff report of some small homes that could be built that are under 700 square feet, these are plans, these are six or so plans that essentially meet that, uh, requirement that, you know, gets that first-time homebuyer into a home. We look at, even in the UR, um, urban residential, I know there was a significant conversation about, you know, changing the zoning, but as LD 2003 comes on board in January of 2024... in January of twenty twenty-four, we're going to be able to build these small homes in, in quantity on those lots, the UR lots. At twelve thousand square feet, you're going to be able to put for these small homes in, on those lots. And, you know, they may be condominiumized. They might have to go to planning board review, but they, that's a possibility for development even under the UR, that those homes could be built on those small lots, and people could own those. So I, I just think that it's, I think it's a good opportunity that we look at, at, at that. Many of the communities across the state do not have this minimum requirement of seven hundred square feet. They don't have this gray area between four hundred and seven hundred. And this really just addresses that. And I just think it's a good proposal, and it, and it opens the door for, for young people to live and work and, and own a home in the city of Auburn, where, you know, things are getting kind of expensive for new homes.
Are there size requirements under the National Building Code for certain types of spaces?
There is, but the National Building Code is actually a hundred and ninety-one square feet. It's the minimum size for a home, but there's tiny home provisions. So that's, that's kind of interesting point that you bring up. The tiny home provision is really under like the, the RV standards. There's RV standards, and then there's home, the IBC, which is, or the RBC, which is the residential building code, is a different code, and their minimum requirement is a hundred and ninety-one square feet.
And that's for a single-family home or that's any living unit?
I think for a single-family home, there's standards different for apartment buildings. I'm not a hundred percent sure what that number is. It might be two forty.
I ask only because we, I don't think we should utilize no number if there's a number that someone's going to have to comply with.
Yeah, and so that was my question too when I was looking at this. So the red strike-through language eliminates any type of minimum amount. So I guess for me, I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish here. Like, are we trying to address, you know, the, between the over four hundred and under seven hundred? I guess I'm confused.
Is it, you're, you're looking to fill the four oh one to six ninety-nine void. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yep.
But do we accomplish that by striking out any?
Yeah, because we can, the tiny home provision is, it, there's no square footage all the way to four hundred. So people could technically build a smaller home. If you, if you assign a smaller, they could build a home under the tiny home provision, under those different guidelines, and still get their home built. So from, you know, from a code perspective, assigning a number, I don't know if it really accomplishes anything because you could still build under the tiny home provision under state law.
So, yeah, I have two questions. One has to do with ADUs and one has to do with the tiny, tiny house. The, the tiny house statute defines a tiny house, and it has to be, it's got to have wheels.
It doesn't necessarily have to have wheels, no.
I thought it had to have, it had to have, maybe you could take the wheels off, but it had to be a transportable structure under the...
No, it doesn't.
Did they make a change to it?
Yeah.
When did they make that change? I think the last time I read it was maybe nine months ago or something like that was...
They haven't made the change, and there's no requirement to have wheels under it.
Or movable. I think his point is movable.
I, I, boy, I remember thinking that was one of the things I didn't like about it, was that they made it, that you had to, that you couldn't actually put it, put it on a foundation and account for that under the statute, but...
Yep. Currently, for tiny homes, they're like, they can be reviewed under a different code depending on how they're constructed, but, but they still, for example, if it's like a single-family home, they can be placed on a single-family home lot. They still have to meet the setbacks, and they're evaluated in the, in the ordinance as a single-family home, no different. It's really just the, where the code, the code differs a little bit.
Okay. So I guess maybe the next time this comes in front of us, I think having the language of the statute and having National Building Code language in terms of minimum size would be helpful for me. I don't know about everyone else. I know that we also allow ADUs, and ADUs don't need to be seven hundred square feet. Correct?
Well, if it's connected, it does not, but if it's standalone ADU, it does.
Okay, so that was something...
Under four hundred or over seven hundred, yeah.
Okay.
So where did the seven hundred come from? Did somebody just say, "We don't want really small houses"?
I stopped asking those questions a while ago.
Yeah, it was, you know, probably, I think if we look at history of housing, the fifties, they were so big, and then the seventies, they got bigger, eighties, they went bigger, nineties, they went even bigger, two thousands, we just went out of control. But I think people just didn't want small homes next to, next to one another, and they wanted to be able to control that, so.
Yeah, I actually have no problem with small homes. So I grew up in an eight hundred and ninety square foot ranch. That was a three-bedroom.
I feel like we've heard that before.
Yeah, right? On a very small...
Is it in New Auburn?
Yeah, two bedrooms, seven hundred.
Is it in New Auburn?
Yeah, Enfield Street.
I just want to make sure. We could have a levy during workshop.
In case anyone hasn't been listening. No, but then, you know, we were fortunate enough to be able to, I say we, my parents were fortunate enough to be able to buy a small lot in Poland on, it was a lot that no one thought was buildable because it was too small. And, you know, forty years later, we've had a camp that's got a three hundred and forty square foot footprint, about four hundred and forty, whatever I write down, three hundred and sixty square foot footprint, four hundred and forty usable because there's a loft, but there's a pitch. And I think no one would squawk at that home being in one of the denser neighborhoods like mine either. It's quite small, but it looks nice. I kind of worry about having like a little hundred and ninety-six square foot house on, on, on a, on, on like a foundation and a pad and, and what that does. I mean, I guess it allows a future owner options to add on and things, but... I don't have a problem with small. I think at a certain point visually, it just really starts to kind of...
Wire.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so some of this stuff is being dictated by the state, you know? So we're not, it's really out of our hands in terms of that really, really small home. And it'll be interesting to see how LD two thousand and three is implemented, and they may assign a minimum house size anyways, regardless of what we do. And there was been some discussion, we had, we had an ADU workshop about two weeks ago, and that came up with the state, with the state representative was there, and they were mumbling something about a hundred, that a hundred and ninety-one or a hundred and ninety-six square foot minimum, and not even, you know, referencing the tiny home provision. So it's, it's kind of interesting, and, and my first question was, well, how does that affect building code as the same question you just had, Evan? As the minimum sizes, and then, again, the minimum sizes on multi-family as well? So it's, it's an interesting thing. There's, we're, as a planning board, we're going to have to deal with LD two thousand and three. We've got to, we're going to have to massage our ordinance. It's work all coming our way very soon. And it's, it's kind of interesting, but for now, I, I really think that there's a real market between the four hundred square foot and the seven hundred square foot. And I think that these houses that we have, for examples, would be great in a, in a lot of neighborhoods in, throughout Auburn.
So I'm trying to understand, Evan, your thoughts real quick. Are you suggesting that you would want a minimum number in the ordinance? Is that what I'm trying to, is that what I'm understanding?
I think the minimum needs to be whatever the minimum is for a single-family under National Building Code, and I am fine with language that says, "Minimum lot size shall comply to minimum," I mean, not, or "minimum square footage shall comply with National..." That way, we're not having to change it every time they change it. That's fine. That, to me, that's transparent enough.
Yep.
But I'm hearing, I'm, I'm seeing what's being shown in front of us. We're looking at the gap between four hundred and seven hundred. If we're trying to close the gap between four hundred and seven hundred, is there a reason we didn't choose four hundred as a single-family home?
Well, one is that the tiny home provision, it really allows them to build a, a home that is smaller. So we didn't, we just, we just assumed just to eliminate the square footage. I do like your language that references the residential building code. The latest residential building code, I think, would be the appropriate language there, and I, I really do appreciate that language. It takes, it gives the teeth of the code enforcement officer something to go back to in the ordinance and point to. We're, we're always having these back and forth conversations with the residents, and if we can have strengthened language in the ordinance, I think it's a great idea.
And let me ask a clarifying, and then I'll stop because I know Tim has a question. Is, is the reason that staff wants to go below, I'm hearing because tiny homes can be smaller, and I'm saying, well, then someone could just utilize the tiny home statute. They wouldn't need to utilize this ordinance. So there's already a mechanism for someone to do that. Is staff thinking but not saying out loud that this also applies to ADUs? Is that part of the concern that someone might want to build an ADU that is, has got that three hundred and sixty square foot footprint, but wouldn't be able to? I guess my understanding of the tiny home statute was different, and I'm going to need to see it all up real time to understand why, if the tiny home statute allows them to do smaller, why we also need to do something, I guess. Anyway, I'll stop talking a little.
I was just concerned about below grade too. Does that count? If they have a finished basement?
If there's a full basement, if it's seven and a half feet, and it, yes, that square footage, that's counted. Yep, absolutely.
So the house on top could be smaller? I mean, if it, if you're counting the below grade?
Yeah, all livable square footage is counted in the square footage. Yep.
Because it isn't for an appraisal, so I didn't know if...
Nope, it's counted in, for a livable space, it's counted the below grade and above grade. As long as, as long as it's finished and it's, you know, to a livable standard, then it's considered in the square footage.
Okay, so what I feel like I'm hearing from the board is that, I think we're in... Oh, no, I'm sorry. I looked, no, I looked over and I saw them chatting, so I thought it was done.
First of all, I think this is great. As a parent of a college-age kid and seeing what's happening to real estate prices, having options out there is huge. My question, have, has the city been approached by people asking for whether or not these things are permissible within the city already?
Yes, it gets, gets asked quite often. Yep.
All right. On that, I just want to put this out there because we're probably all thinking it. If this goes forward and if it takes off, we need to be very aware, and this is a conversation to have down the road, just want to put it out there. We need to be aware of where these things may happen because density per acre will go crazy. Am I accurate in thinking that? If all of a sudden we have lots that might have two or three homes on them because of the home size, correct me if I'm wrong, but am I looking at a potential density issue?
I feel like people don't want apartment buildings, but people love a single family.
Yeah, so the density is going to be, you know, we've got our current zoning, and the zoning is what it is today. There will be a little bit more leverage come January twenty twenty-four as we learn more about LD two thousand and three and what that will allow us. I gave the example, example of the UR where a twelve thousand square foot lot, you could have four units on that lot. So...
Okay, thank you, John.
Well, you think, I, what I was going to say is I feel like, from a workshop's perspective, as I'm listening to the board, I think we're in agreement of removing the seven hundred. And is anyone like vehemently opposed to it? Like, I think, so I think, I think it's a good idea, right? I think we're just trying to like workshop and think about, okay, what is a viable alternative solution based upon tiny homes, based upon LD two thousand and three, based upon, you know, your density, like all of those? And I did make some notes to, you know, some of Evan's takeaways that I think he'd given to staff, so. Well, now I'm writing them down so I can cross-reference. Take them as yours, babe. A what? Okay, so do we need to like verbally give you, does anyone have any other thoughts?
I think if we could get like maybe direction from the board for, we could bring it forward for a public hearing. You could initiate whatever process you'd like, but I think in order to make this into an actual public hearing, I think we would need either direction from the board or from council. Anyway, I don't think we've gotten it from council.
In order for us to initiate a zone changing process, we need to provide the language that we want. That's part of the ordinance, which is why, I'm assuming, staff gave us the specific language change so that way we could do that tonight. I understood in the staff packet, their hope was that we would initiate that process tonight and hold a public hearing next meeting. That was what I'm gathering.
That's correct.
I don't think we have the language.
I think there seems to be enough questions that we would need more information that I would think that...
Would it be another workshop?
I would, I would assume.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, to Evan's point, you know, and, and John, you seem to like it as well, right? Like reference to the National Residential Code, you know, some information around applying it to ADUs, wanting to see the actual tiny home language, and I'm actually in agreement with that too, so... Yeah, I just want to, I don't love the idea of the below grade counting as, I, I just don't. I just feel like somebody could build an eighty square foot above grade and then have eighty square feet below grade. I just don't think that that is ideal. Like, for this, what I feel like where we want is smaller homes for people by all means, but I feel like it could get really strange. And with these pricing, I know that appraisal, if people are going to buy these, below grade doesn't matter to appraisers, which is the people who are going to give you a mortgage. So I do not think that that would be ideal to count that regardless.
I kind of want to hear from like a lending specialist too. Are we going to set someone up to build something and then go try to sell it at some point? And the buyer is not going to be able to get a conventional loan for it? I'm not, I'm just trying to, like, what are some of the implications of doing these?
Because I definitely know the below grade is a thing, for sure. I mean, there's, they will count the fifty square feet or eighty, whatever, you know, above. They will not, even split homes, when you have bedrooms in the basement, they're not counting that as square footage of your house or bedrooms. I'm just saying, I just know that part very well.
It seems a little cost prohibitive too, because you could just build it on a slab and not have a basement at all.
Yeah, but it's so...
And that seems more cost efficient for something like this to be able to actually get a loan.
Right, but the other thing is it's so small. Where are you going to put your heating or...
I'm not worried about the loan for the person building it. I'm saying, are we gonna, is it the kind of thing where we said, "Sure, guy, you can go do it", and then it turns out they're thinking they've built a house only, what we've said was like, "Well, you should have done your due diligence, man. No one else can actually buy it unless they're at a cash sale." Like, that's not our problem.
That's really not purview, though.
I don't think, you know, I don't think it's in my purview to protect people from doing that, but I would like to be aware of the implications.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how the tiny home, I don't know if there's conventional loans on tiny homes. I don't think there is. But there's certainly a lot of loans on RVs.
Okay, any other questions?
They give out loans for... They give out loans for RVs every day, so.
All right. Any other thoughts before we move on to the next agenda item?
Just to clarify, would this be in a, a new classification of home? Or is this just decreasing our minimum from 700 down to 401?
No. So if you look in the, um, staff packet, you'll see, um, the, the language on page, it's like one of two. So basically it's striking like, so this is the ordinance language. It's striking out the 700 and they left it with nothing. And, um, we're saying, I think collectively as a group, we're totally fine with removing the 700, but I think we want some other kind of buffer. No, not the tree buffer, but a different kind of a buffer, um, within this to be, yeah, to be able to, um, provide some guidance, not just, I don't, I don't feel comfortable like leaving it. It's nothing with the assumption that we fall on to the tiny home 400, because if that change, I just don't feel comfortable. I want this to be rock solid, but my personal opinion.
Sounds good.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right. Moving on to the next agenda item, which is also a workshop, which is kind of interesting. Like this was kind of like interesting packet meeting today, um, regarding, um, discontinuing, um, you know, part of a street. So I'll hand it over to staff. And then basically this is a workshop. And then again, this is what we did right now. We just kind of have a conversation about it and then, you know, give, um, staff actions and suggestions.
So this is part of the, uh, PAL Center. Um, we're looking, so the, the PAL Center got, uh, some, some money. They used about $3 million of opera funds. And then we got another $3 million, uh, from a congressional delegation award, uh, from Senator Collins's office. And they're building a, about a 14,000 square foot new, uh, PAL Center. I don't, I don't have any of those renderings, but they, they did share them with, with, uh, council this past Monday. But part of this work, uh, includes, um, discontinuance of townway, um, which includes Chestnut Street. Uh, uh, it gets just to kind of back up. What you're looking at right there is, um, we've got some additional work. This work here is not, this was what we shared with the council. Um, but this work that we're looking at is the stuff in the yellow is going to become, that's seven Chestnut Street. Um, there with the building, the city's looking to acquire that. And then, um, Chestnut Street, a portion of Chestnut Street will become land and water conservation fund land. And then the stuff in the red on the right, um, it is now currently land and water conservation fund land. And that land will now become part of the city's land. Um, if you go scroll down, you can keep scrolling down. So this is the new, if you want to spin that, um, yep. Um, this is the new 14,000 square foot PAL Center. Um, and you can see that, that what I've got highlighted in yellow and is going to require, under our ordinance requirement, is to, um, make a, a recommendation to council that the, the discontinuance happen of Chestnut Street. Um, that's about 250 feet. Um, they're doing that so there's connectivity, there's, there's footsall courts, um, to the right. And there's going to be additional, we're going to leverage additional land and water conservation fund, um, monies for a, a new turf field, um, in the PAL Center itself proper. There's going to be a full basketball court in there. Um, and there's going to be a great space for kids to go and, and a real improvement. So the, the thought process is they really want to make that just one park. Um, and the connectivity there is, as one whole park, because there's going to be a lot of, of kids moving through that area and discontinuing the road is, um, is really the best way to address that safety concern. Um, so we've got to go through this process of discontinuance of 250 feet. And then reassigning some of that to land and water conservation, some to be utilized by the PAL Center proper, the new structure. Some of it being utilized as a turnaround for safety. We'll see the, we'll see the site plan come in for site plan review with the planning board. Uh, but this is the first step in the process, um, uh, for this project. The, the discontinuance of this stretch of road does not affect any butters. It does affect obviously people in the area and people, people using or used to use, uh, who use, uh, Chestnut Street often. Um, but, um, other than that, it's, um, you know, it's really going to be a part of a larger project that addresses the youth, uh, youth in the area, so.
Yeah, it was going to be, one of my questions too is about a butter. So I appreciate you kind of like getting out that front and center.
Can you open up the GIS map so we can see the, the, the surrounding roads as well?
Sure. And while you're doing that, quick question, like would, had it been normal to have this in our staff packet? This map?
You mean by normal?
Well, just for us to review.
Yeah. I mean, this was, I mean, I don't know any other way we could have shown
Okay.
that stretch of road.
Oh, she, she's saying there's, that we didn't, it wasn't in our staff packet. We're seeing it right now for the first time. Except that staff is asking us to make a motion to hold a public hearing.
I didn't realize.
I would assume that they would want us to have had a small information to begin with, but.
Oh, I'm.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's.
Takes the village. Yeah. Okay. So while Catherine is pulling that up, um, I, I'll just start by saying that, you know, I think it's a great idea. Like, you know, I mean, however it shakes out, hopefully it is in the best possible way. But I do love the idea of like opening up the space in general for the general public, right? So I, I thought it was.
I'm excited because my son plays soccer and there's only, well, now we have the new fields, but we used to have to go down on the turf field. So it's kind of nice. Hopefully EL or local people will have option to have other turf.
Can I go to the map real quick? Just so I can make sure I'm identifying the. Or maybe people can identify easily, but I, I kind of wanted this up there because I wanted to show that Chestnut, while it could be used as a throughway, is, is a minor throughway and was generally really only used by local residents because it, it's, it's not a required throughway. There, there are multiple other ways to get around it. I just thought that that would be something that would have been important to point out if we're going to be closing a street. Only because public streets, although we don't think of them as such, really aren't a public amenity. And I know that we're talking about increasing a public amenity in that, in the neighborhood. But one of the things we have to balance is the understanding that if we're taking away a road, we're also taking away another amenity and how does that affect traffic? And I just wanted everyone to be able to see that it, it has a minimal impact on, on what would be traffic patterns.
Will you be able to walk through?
Yes, you'll be able to walk through. Yep.
Yeah, right? So and that, that's the purpose of it, right? Is opening up those two spaces and allowing.
Walkable neighborhood too, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I like it a lot.
So I guess Evan, I like where you're heading and I, if you could help, um, maybe, you know, what, so this is a, considered a minor road in the area? And just to kind of, because I think that's something that we're, because we've got to go through public hearing on this and we're going to, you know, we may want to.
Right. Well, I'm saying if, okay, um, if we needed to close a section of South Main Street, um, in between Vicari and say Ipswich, between Vicari and Ips, I'll, no, because then there'd be a way around. But if you said, we need to close South Main Street between, uh, Vicari and Ipswich, I'm not sure there's a public good that you could present that would justify that given that is the only way to pass through there. Um, here, while yes, people use, uh, Chestnut, um, and it is used as a through, a, a through street. Um, it's not, uh, it's not, uh, someone's only option. And you're already talking about sort of a dense, uh, street grid in that area to begin with. So someone might have to drive an additional, you know, 400 feet to hit the next intersection instead of just cutting across at, at Chestnut. And, and so when weighing the fact that you're taking away that, a, a public road, which is in and of itself an amenity, what we're gaining for an amenity, I think, I think outweighs that.
And I feel like we're gaining more than we're losing. I feel like that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And it's, there's a lot of kids down there already. And that's why I was like making sure that at least they could still walk through. Like I didn't know, obviously I didn't see any pictures. So, um, I wasn't sure if the kids could actually still walk through or anybody could walk through.
I would challenge someone who doesn't drive, who isn't used to that neighborhood to drive through and actually recognize that Chestnut Street in front of the PAL Center is a street. It is essentially, it looks like a parking lot you're driving through. It feels like a parking lot you're driving through. It, I don't know how often everyone does that.
I did it the other day and it's like, am I supposed to go this way? That, it feels like that.
So those, those aren't going to be affected, right? So any of the elimination of Chestnut Street, there's no, there's no, um, direct impact, uh, to any residences.
Yeah. So the only thing I would say, because I do see in our staff packets that, um, it's a action staff suggestion, um, holding a public hearing. Uh, I, do you guys feel like you have the information to hold a public hearing? Or do we want another workshop to actually review these? I'll leave it up to.
Is there going to be like a, uh, those, those driveways or something like, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a plan just to, I mean, because the kids are still going to be there, those driveways are kind of right there. Maybe a fence or, I'm just trying to think about that.
Yeah. So those, those types of things would be addressed in the site plan review.
So I guess leave it up to the board. Like, do you guys feel comfortable moving forward with, um, public hearing on the 12th? Or I, I'll leave it up to you guys, like what you guys want to do.
I'd be comfortable with a public hearing.
I'm sorry?
I'd be comfortable with a public hearing on the 12th.
I as well. Okay.
So do we, do we need to like verbally kind of give you a suggest, like read, read this or do you feel comfortable with direction?
Uh, I make a motion to initiate, uh, planning board action. To pull, to hold a public hearing for, um, the discontinuance and realignment of Chestnut and Miller Street, uh, to be held at our next regular meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries already. So the next item on the agenda, just miscellaneous upcoming items, and then we're going to adjourn.
Okay. So, um, next month, September 12th, we have a recycling facility coming through. Um, it's, I think mostly wood pallets and, um, there will be housing for the folks working at the recycling facility. We're still waiting for, for an updated description for that project and updated narrative. But I'm expecting, because it's a really minor change that we're waiting for, that that will come through. Um, we are expecting to see the Life Forest Cemetery, the conservation cemetery that we've been talking about. They are complete with that and, um, we're finishing up, they're finishing up having discussion with the state about some of those legal requirements for having a cemetery. Also, there will be, there's, um, the warehouse on Center Street that we reviewed last year for Lamy Willahan, that, that project is requesting an extension. And that's all I can think of.
All right. Perfect. At this moment, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
This stuff's available in the council packet.